Okay, I'd like to call the Joint Finance and Village Board Meeting to Order for Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski?
Here.
Trustee Service?
Here.
Trustee Paul?
Here.
Trustee Zerbal?
Here.
Trustee Flukie?
Here.
Member Selk?
Here.
Trustee Krieger is excused, Trustee Atkinson is excused, and Member Jaden is excused.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Trustee Service, second by Trustee Paul to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, action on the minutes from the November 12th, 2024 Joint Finance and Personnel Committee and Village Board Meeting.
There's a couple corrections if we can make under the closed session items. Tom Selk and Tim Jaden are ayes and they were not in the closed session for seven A or eight, item eight.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Whoop, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the correction of the minutes. Anybody else? Or, I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy, a second by Trustee Service to amend. Any other changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, action items. Consider, discuss, act on the draft 2026 proposed village budget. Before we start this, first of all, I'd like to thank Greg and Joel. We've had many, many meetings on this budget. This has been a strange year, you know, with the anticipated change in costs with the bargaining agreement, and we now have to bear the full cost for our acts on body cameras for all of our officers because we don't have any help anymore from the Packers. So, there were a lot of expenses. That alone is a large, large sum of our expenses that have gone up. So, you did an excellent job in working this budget. The department heads, thank you. We went to several of you and said, okay, well, thanks for your budget, but this is how much more you have to shave off the top of it, and they did it, and really appreciate it. It's tough to make some of those decisions. So, thank you to everybody, and, okay, it's your show now.
All right, I'll kick us off, and I'll echo Mary's statement. So, I just want to kind of recognize Greg and Sherry as well. Sherry couldn't be here tonight, but I want to recognize Greg and Sherry for all their hard work. It starts at the very beginning, honestly, of the year to begin the process. So, as soon as we're done with budget, we move into audit, right Greg? And then, as soon as audit is near complete, we're already working on the next year's budget, and part of that effort is our capital improvement plan. So, Greg and Sherry do an outstanding job at putting it together, process-wise, administering the effort, and then also coordinating and collaborating with each of the departments to ensure we have a product that we can present to you, one of which that we're really proud of because of the effort and the work, but two, because I think it really tries to accomplish the goals and objectives that you set forward for us very early on in the process. So, once again, thank Greg and Sherry for that effort, and echo Mary's statement as well about the department heads and the amount of work and effort that goes into producing this budget. Say this every year, and I'll reiterate that statement. The budget that is presented to you tonight is balanced, as it is. You can certainly entertain a motion right now, if you'd like, to propose the budget be approved and forwarded on for the end of the month, if you so choose. However, I do have a short presentation that'll walk you through the budget, so you have a basic understanding of the high-level numbers that are included for your consideration. So, real quickly, I just want to kind of introduce the budget process. For most of you, you've been with us for a number of years and understand this, so this will be a quick review for you. The overall annual budget has three main purposes. The first is to ensure that we meet statutory requirements. So, under state law, we are required to have a budget. We are required to have a budget that is balanced. We have to adopt a levy, and then ultimately establish a rate in which we can then assign and assess properties to the property taxes for that property. In addition to that, there are a number of operational requirements that are necessary to be met statutorily, and so we have to allocate the resources necessary to meet those mandated services. So, elections, fire and rescue, property assessment, stormwater management, snow and ice control. Those are just a series of examples of services that are required to be met under statute. So, we have to make sure that we provide financial resources to meet those obligations. In addition to that, it provides transparency. So, this is a detailed proposed spending by function and service for the next fiscal period. It provides historical spending detail by function and service. It also, as you've gone through the budget book, you've seen organizational performance measurements and data, and that's something that is a little bit more robust and new this year, to try to establish at least a framework for how well we're doing, right, and kind of paint that story, or paint that picture, or tell that story of how we're operating. In addition to that, it talks about human resources, the staffing, the wages and benefits, the people that really put the service together and deliver it for the citizens and taxpayers of our community. And then, if need be, it helps facilitate decision-making and prioritization. As Mary had mentioned, department heads work with their staff. They identify and prioritize their needs. They submit that ultimately to administration. Administration then meets, discusses, and works through prioritization. As you know, we meet, we discuss with the entire board periodically throughout the course of the year in identifying what those priorities are for the coming fiscal period, and we try to work those into that budget document. And then ultimately, you have days like today where we review that data as it's being proposed, and then ultimately, potentially prioritizing services to meet the obligations that are desired by your constituents. As every year, our budget is broken into several different fund structures. There are three main fund structures that are incorporated into the budget. The first is the governmental funds. Governmental funds are largely funded through property taxes. There are other revenue sources that fund governmental funds, but by and large, they are mainly funded by property taxes. Those governmental funds are broken into four different fund categories. The general fund, which will be the area that we spend most of the time today, our special revenue funds, our debt service fund, and our capital project fund. From governmental funds, you'll see in our book, we have enterprise funds. Think of these as your business accounts. Those are your water utility, sanitary sewer utility, and our stormwater utility. Those are funded primarily through user fees. So, if you pay your water bill, your sewer bill, or your stormwater charges, those charges and fees go towards operating those various enterprise funds. And then finally, we have what are called internal service funds, as indicated by the title. They service internal operations of the village. We have two main internal service funds. Our medical dental insurance fund, as you know, we are a self-insured agency, so we fund ourselves through transfers to the medical and dental insurance fund. And then, we have our vehicles and fleet maintenance and operations fund, and depreciation transfers occur between the governmental funds and the enterprise funds to serve and support the vehicles and equipment and fleet that is necessary to provide and deliver services to the community. Ultimately, our budget takes into account our mission, our vision, and our key strategic directives or goals. All of these have been reviewed this past year as part of a strategic planning update, and all were viewed as necessary to move forward. And we'll continue to work on updating our strategic plan as it relates to our objectives and action items, but it should be noted that the mission, the vision, and the core values and the strategic directives largely will remain the same. Now, moving on to general fund revenues, again, the vast majority of property taxes are allocated towards the general fund. And as indicated in this chart, property taxes account for 57% of the overall revenues that support general fund operations. Beyond that, the next highest allocation are intergovernmental revenues. Consider those your state aid payments, state shared revenue, transportation aids, and the like. And then, to balance that out, our charges for services make up the other top three of our largest revenue sources. And charges for services could be things like permit fees for building permits, license fees for various licenses, or even program charges for things like swim lessons and shelter rentals. For 2026 budget, now, these are 2025 property taxes that are levied payable in 2026. Our general fund will have a total property tax levy of just under $12.5 million. We have general fund, or property tax levy, excuse me, going towards capital projects fund. This is comparable to each year at $550,000. We have a debt service fund, so this fund is levying property taxes to support debt service principal and interest payments of just under $700,000. And then, we do have remaining referendum bonding, so this is an additional debt service levy, supporting things like the Performing Arts Center, the Community Center, and the Community Pool at just under $1.5 million. It should be noted that even if you wanted to levy $0 to your constituents, you would still be required by law under general obligation bond issuance to levy at least the value for the debt service and the referending bonding. So, even if you got creative and said, let's create an alternative revenue source like land sales and put, let's say, $13 million into land sales to then effectively not levy any property taxes, you would still be required under statutory law to levy at least your debt service for the next year. Ultimately, the total levy that's being proposed as part of this budget is just over $15 million, at $15,89,145. That is an increase over last year's levy by roughly just over $1 million, or a 7.16% increase. We'll talk a little bit more in a few slides about why that levy increase is being proposed and the increase that is over last year. Just to give you some context and how we got to this levy, we usually give this table just to give you an example. At the onset of our budget process, we had a slight worry that we would be in a similar situation as we were last year, where we had a situation where our equalized value increased at a greater degree than our aggregate assessed value. And basically, what that would do is it would create a greater disparity between our assessed and equalized ratio, thus artificially increasing our tax rate and creating a larger tax burden for the individual taxpayer. And what we did end up finding, though, at the beginning or through this process is that, in fact, our assessed value did increase at a higher degree than our equalized value. So, that was actually good news for us. Our equalized value is over $4.1 billion, and our increase over last year was just over 1.23%. The aggregate assessed value for the village is at a $3.7 billion value. That was an increase of about 2.3%. So, as you can see, our aggregate assessed value increased at a greater percentage than our equalized value. As a reminder, the equalized value is determined by the state. The assessed value is the value that the assessor assigns to all real property within the village. Our goal is to ultimately be as close to a one-to-one ratio, and we're about a 0.9% or a 0.9 ratio between assessed value and equalized value. As you can see, at 3.7 billion versus 4.1, we do have a deviation there that does stand to be corrected in 2026, as our assessor is going to go through a market adjustment next year. As indicated, our total village levy will increase by just over $1 million, or 7.16%. However, because of that change in equalized value and the apportionment of taxes between county, school district, and vocational college, our overall tax rate will only increase 1.96%, or just under 10 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So, even though our levy's going up 7% because of the deviation in our assessment ratio, our overall tax rate will only go up just under 2%. So, that's good news for the village. This chart indicates a history of tax rates over the course of the last several years. Even at $5.03, you can see that the village's tax rate is still among one of the lowest taxing years over the last 10 years. Putting it into context then, as to kind of what this looks like as far as different values go for properties in the village. At the top of the table, you have the 2024 tax rate. Again, that's 2024 taxes payable in 2025, so last year's tax rate at just over $4.93. And then, what's being proposed as part of this budget? For a property that was valued at $100,000, that individual would pay last year $493.36. This year, that same property would pay $503.02 for a difference of $9.66. And if I were to take that dollar amount and break it out by month, I would take that total bill of $503 divided by 12, my total cost for village services would be just under $42. For the average home, that average home is $247,300. That individual would pay in village taxes for next year as part of this budget, $1,243.96. That's a difference of $23.84 for that average homeowner. I put a little note in there, there isn't any new data from 2025, but as of 2024, J.D. Power had indicated that American households spend on average $141 for cell phone service for their home, family. And if I'm the average taxpayer, I'm paying much, much less than that per month for all of the village services that the village renders and provides to our property owners. And you might say, well, I pay much more. I have a home that's valued at $250,000. I pay well over $3,000 in taxes to the village. Why do you say that my total tax burden is only $1,000? And that's because even though we prepare and send the bill and collect payment, only 34 cents of every dollar that's paid to the village in property taxes actually stays with the village. So, little over 66% of that total tax bill goes to other taxing jurisdictions like the school district, the county, and the vocational college. So, again, that average homeowner, I know, Gary, you like this check. So, here's the check. The average homeowner would pay $3,651.73 in projected taxes for next year, and I will use the caveat, this is projected. Although the county, the school districts, and the vocational colleges have identified what their levies are next year, the state has not issued its final tax credit for schools. The school-state tax levy credit has not been issued. So, this is based on a projection using last year's estimate, which we anticipate to be relatively the same for 2025. So, what does that mean? Here's that check registry. Again, if I were to break down that $3,000 bill, what does that bill pay for, or what does it go towards? For village services, anyway, the largest portion of that goes towards public safety. So, annually, a property owner of an average home will pay $525 for public safety. That ensures and guarantees that if they call 911 within a reasonable amount of time, paramedic is going to arrive at their door to treat whatever medical condition they have. If their house is on fire, there will be a fire department that responds in a reasonable amount of time to distinguish that fire, or if there's some type of disturbance or issue that law enforcement needs to be involved in, they would have that availability as well. I'll point out a couple other tidbits. So, for $13.90, every street in the village gets plowed and maintained in the winter months. I challenge any of you to find a private snowplow service to plow your driveway or sidewalk for that cost for an entire winter season. I can guarantee you that you won't find that. For sanitation, for all of your garbage, recycling, woodchipping, yard waste collection, and the like, the large item pickup, for $58.14 for an entire year, you get all that service picked up at your curb once a week or up to once a month, depending on the type of service that's being rendered. Again, it would challenge anyone to find any better service for that value over the course of the year. I don't think you will. And then, there are a variety of other services that are provided that enhance the well-being of our community and the quality of life, like parks, rec, and forestry. And then, there are, of course, those required services under general government that have to be accounted for as well. So, again, I think as you kind of break down the cost for where those services are being rendered and the cost for each, you'll find, I think, a good value for the average taxpayer. So, let's talk a little bit about expenditures here. As indicated in the general fund, there are major functions that are provided by the village. Those functions are broken into those categories, as indicated in the pie chart and the bar chart. The largest major function by cost is public safety. At roughly 51% of total operating costs go towards public safety. The second highest would be public works, and right behind that is general government. I should note that there are other services that are provided, but the vast majority of those services, again, are going to be accompanied by one of those three largest areas, whether it be public safety, public works, and general government. Now, if you were to ask me what type of expenditures are being made that accounts for that roughly $15 million in expenditures, the vast majority of about 73% of total expenditures are directly tied to labor. So, wages and benefits account for the single largest expenditure within the budget. If you were to ask Greg, Joel, is there a way that we could eliminate our spend to reduce our tax rate, but we don't want to reduce any of our labor, and we only want to figure out how to make cuts to our supplies? Well, supplies only accounts for 7% of the overall general fund budget. So, you'd have to find a lot of paperclips and pencils and erasers in order to account for any sizable dollar amount to make reductions that are going to have a positive effect on the overall levy or tax rate. So, it comes down to people then, and people make up the services. So, it really is a question of what services do you want to reduce, or what services do you want to cut in order to accommodate the reductions that are needed to make sizable changes to tax rate or tax levy. Again, this is just a small screen, but as indicated in the budget, there are 118 total positions that are being proposed for continued funding. Of that 118, one of those positions is a new position that is proposed that we'll talk about briefly, and that will be a request for a fire marshal, which is kind of an enhanced fire inspector position. It should be noted that that position is ultimately replacing two part-time inspectors. So, those two positions would be eliminated as a result of an inclusion of a full-time fire marshal position. Beyond that, there are no changes to part-time staff outside of the elimination of those two part-time fire inspector positions. Again, want to touch on a few highlights here, and then we'll wrap up this introductory presentation and answer any questions that you have. Again, general fund revenues are just over $21 million, or just on, excuse me, just over $21.5 million at $21,626,238. That is an increase of about 5% over last year. There are three factors that play into that increase. First, there's the closure of TID number four. So, as I mentioned early on, there's an increased levy of about $1 million. Part of that levy increase is directly associated with the fact that TID number four closed last year. So, that levy is now being transferred to the general fund. So, that increases the levy in that regard. We did see our increase in state shared aids go up, transportation aids, and our state shared revenues did increase as a result of acts that were completed at the state level last year. And then, you'll see a fairly sizable increase to EMS billing rates, and that was directly attributed to changes in the rate structure that the board made last year. There was a two-phased rate increase, one for last year, and then one for 2026. On the general fund side, again, balanced budget, so $21,626,238, a 5% increase in overall expenditures. The main driver here is, at present, we have a, working through a tentative agreement with our public safety union, and our collective bargaining cost for wages is driving, is a large driver, a cost increases for next year's budget. Beyond that, general inflation is really the name of the game here. There's increased expenditures related to wages, benefits, and equipment costs, and that's really just kind of, again, that inflationary pressure that is affecting most governmental entities as well as private enterprise. It should be noted that we are not planning or proposing any transfers of existing fund balance in 2026. Last year, we had a transfer of undesignated fund balance to support some existing retirements. We are not proposing to make any transfers from undesignated fund balance. You may have a question, because I saw Tracy look at me. The question is, there are transfers being applied, and those are general transfers that we always make between the utilities back to the general fund. So, those are operating transfers. They're not transfers necessarily from undesignated fund balance. So, I'm hoping that that was probably your question when you looked at me. Ultimately, our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, it's just over $6 million. That is 25% of our fund balance policy ratio, and that fits right in the middle of our balance ratio of 20 to 30% fund balance. So, we are not proposing or making any changes to either the policy or the allocation of fund balance. Want to touch briefly on capital project funds. There are $875,000 allocated for street-related maintenance projects. Those are your typical mill pave. But also of note, the Paco Land Grant Roundabout is included in next year's budget. We do have a cost share agreement with Brown County to assist in the completion of that project. On the park and rec side, there is just over $500,000 of various capital projects, namely, the Ashwabamay Trail Maintenance Project at the Marina. If you recall, there's some pavers in that area that would effectively be replaced and repaved with concrete. That's proposed, a new playground at Canterbury Park, and then, namely, the Ashwabamay Chalet Roof Replacement Project is also in that. There are additional projects that are encompassed within the budget, smaller projects, gathering areas, picnic tables, things of that nature. They didn't necessarily make the list. These are the three notable projects that will have a very public-facing display. And then, finally, under other capital projects in the budget, there is $5.34 million worth of building improvements and preparations for what will be Phase One of projects related to the facility condition assessment that we completed this past year and space utilization study. So, that $5.34 million accounts for the relocation of fuel islands, salt sheds, and the preparation of the Public Works grounds area and facility. It also includes the architectural design and engineering for what will eventually be that new Public Works or expanded Public Works facility. In addition to that, it accounts for a new roof of the Public Works garage, new doors, and things of that nature as it related to the report that was indicated in that facility condition assessment. I should note that $5.34 million is going to be funded through a new debt issuance. So, even if that project were to be removed from the budget, it would have zero impact on the tax rate for next year. However, removing it, it would have an impact on whatever that future tax rate will be in 2026 payable in 2027. The enterprise funds, the water utility is starting to see, I guess, black, if you will. There were a number of years where our water utility was underperforming, but due to some changes in rate structure and rate increases that we've seen over the last few years, our water utility is now seeing a positive net change in position. We have just over $6.2 million in revenues. That is an ultimate decrease from last year, and that is largely based on trends. There's just less consumption, and as a result of that consumption, we have less revenues coming in. We do have a net decrease in purchased water from the city of Green Bay. Again, that is just trend line. Again, less consumption results in a decrease in expenditure for source supply of water. As noted, the positive change in net position is now in the black. We're looking at an increase of just under $50,000, which is good. Last year, we were, our net change was negative in the tune of a few hundred thousand of dollars. There is about $850,000 in capital outlay projects in a variety of form and function for water, for the water utility. On the sewer side, not quite as rosy of a picture as we have seen with the water utility. There is just over $7 million in operating revenues. That is an increase over last year, and that accounts for rate increases that have been approved by the board or proposed to be approved by the board at a future meeting. That's based on that presentation that New Water had presented and Public Works had presented last month with some additional costs for treatment and capital-related projects at the New Water Plant or the Green Bay Metropolitan Sewage District. This utility is continually... This utility is continually underperforming at this time with a negative change in net position of just over $700,000. This is comparable to last year. So not a major concern for alarm for next year, but it is something we need to address. And that's why you'll see annually where we're having these conversations about changes and increases to the rates. There's just been a period of time where the village has not increased its sanitary sewer rates to the same degree that increases in cost for services for treatment has occurred over the last 10 or 15 years, and it's just simply caught up to us. We've had a very healthy fund balance in the sewer utility over a number of years, but we're getting to that point now where we need to make adjustments, or we will be in a dire position in the not-too-distant future. In the budget book, you will not find any capital outlay projects for the sewer utility. And again, that's primarily just related to the change in position. On the stormwater side, we have a very healthy stormwater utility. The overall operating revenues account for just over $1.8 million, although that is a decrease over last year. There are accounts, excuse me, accounts for rate increases are approved by the board from last year. Excuse me. You will see a pretty healthy increase in operating expenditures in the stormwater utility, and that's predominantly related to our efforts to relocate leaf and brush pickup operations to be funded by the stormwater utility. It's been shown that leaf pickup is an element that helps maintain our MS4 permit requirements from the state. And so rather than having that operation being funded by the general fund, we allocated it under the stormwater utility, ultimately reducing the expenditure on the general fund side, but increasing it on the stormwater side. Ultimately, there is a positive change in net position of the tune of about $547,000. And that's good, but we have to also recognize, over the next five years, there are significant capital outlay projects that are planned. And so any of those rate increases that we've either have approved or have proposed moving forward in the future are directly tied to the fact that we're trying to accommodate those capital outlay projects over the next five years. And so next year, there's just over $1.7 million in capital outlay projects incorporated in the budget. Real quickly, want to touch on annual budgeting guideline, guiding principles. These are things that we kind of review annually just to kind of keep us at a point where we can have fruitful conversations. These are guiding principles that the board has adopted and have kind of implemented over the last five or so years. And the first principle is really just the village board and the finance personnel committee reviews the budget at a high level. We can certainly get into the weeds. The department heads are here and can certainly justify and explain line item by line item. But again, I think the board, if it focuses more on things like, what's the tax rate? Is it going up? Is it going down? What's the levy? Is it going up? Is it going down? Are there any service level changes? What's being added? What's being eliminated? Why is certain departments being funded certain ways over others? Those high-level conversations and questions will ultimately produce a more tangible outcome that will elicit or produce something that I think is what you're trying to achieve versus identifying how many pencils are in a particular supply budget. Program or service elimination is preferable to poor or marginal quality programs. Again, really kind of focused on what are your priorities? What do you want your service delivery to look like? And put your focus and attention on that, and then prioritize based off of that conversation. We note this as part of our budget effort with department staff, that as much as reasonably possible, village services that provide private benefit should be supported either in whole or in part by fees and charges. So as a case in point, I make every year swim lessons. An individual, if they want to take swimming lessons, we do provide that. There are some subsidies that go towards providing those types of programs through the tax levy, but by and large, a significant portion of the cost to support some lessons are paid for by user fees because there's a direct benefit to that individual participating in that program. Generally, we will not recommend across-the-board cuts or reductions. We really want to focus on prioritizing service delivery. And with that, we recognize that in setting those priorities, changes can impact some departments more than others. Again, the provision of services should reflect the priorities of the community, and I think we do a good job of that in preparing the budget. Service changes or reductions should be sustainable and not one time, and not only changes or reductions, but revenue sources as well. I know there's a lot of conversation about increasing land sales or recycling commodity revenues sometimes fluctuate year over year. Could we just inflate a number? Interest income is another example where we may want to increase interest income because of a certain trend line, or we want to increase that to make our budget look rosier. Those are things that we don't want to do because it may not necessarily always be sustainable. When we allocate resources for capital outlay projects, we really want to put a focus on current assets and infrastructure before we build new. And then again, reduction should not curtail the delivery of course services or the ability to meet legal requirements. You may have a real pet project, but that pet project doesn't have a mandate. Certain programs and the provision of certain services do. So we can't just simply say, Chris, we're going to eliminate your election budget for next year. We're going to bring it down to $0 because we want to fund a new playground at Mike Van Park. We couldn't, we could fund the playground at Mike Van Park, but elections would be required. We have to meet that obligation. We would just need to find a different source to do that. So with that, as I mentioned, the 2026 budget is balanced. You don't need to do anything if you don't want to. However, if you do add services, obviously that impacts our revenues. And when we add services and expenditures, we have to find a revenue offset to balance that budget. That could come in the form of property taxes or some other revenue source. With that, and then before I turn it over to Greg, I just want to point out, in your budget book, in your packet, on page 11 is a list of modifications that have occurred over the course of the last several weeks. So these are modifications in the form of revenue increases or adjustments, in the form of reductions in expenditure. They're based on department and function within the budget. Ultimately, what this does is it provides a transparent list to you and to the department heads of all the changes that we have made. So department heads should not be surprised by anything that's on this list because these are conversations that we have generally had with them over the course of several weeks. And then, consistent with that same reduction, if you go to page 145, there is a list of projects under the capital fund that are modifications as well. So again, reductions, changes, modifications, revenue increases to support projects or the capital budget. So with that, I'll answer any questions and turn it over to Greg to kind of walk through any of the detail items.
I have a question on the modifications and explanation sheet. On page 11, there's an adjustment called removed depreciation charge-offs of $54,000. And on page 12, it's $150,647. Could you just run through what that does?
Sure. So that has, that relates to our vehicle fleet and depreciation. So that's one of our internal service funds where we acquire assets, vehicles specifically in a different fund, and then we charge back the annual depreciation to the operating budgets on a year-to-year basis to essentially build back a fund balance to replace that vehicle in the future years. If you recall, last year was the first year that the village had to issue debt to purchase vehicles. What we found is a number of dump trucks, fire engines, those larger pieces of equipment are exceeding a cost that we had in the past, where they've tripled, doubled, tripled, quadrupled over the last 10 years. So that adjustment, what we originally were hoping to do was to continue still charging back for that to build up a fund balance. But we also had debt service on those vehicles. So in essence, it was double-counted. The hope was that we could try to do that, make that work, but it was just, it was just too much. It's too much levy focused on those vehicles. And we're going to alter our plan that just, at least now for the near term, for the foreseeable future, we probably will have to continue issuing debt for those large pieces of equipment. So that would have been the annual depreciation on just a couple of vehicles. You can see that's $200,000 for one year depreciation on, I think, four or five vehicles that we said, no, we're not going to charge back. That's being paid for as part of that debt service.
So in effect, you're postponing it, depreciation, correct?
Well, we're not postponing it. Essentially, at this point, eliminating the charge back to the individual department. We will be paying back the debt through our debt service, knowing that in 10 years, 15 years, whenever that dump truck, for example, has to be replaced, we don't have a fund, we don't have a fund balance for it anymore. We're probably going to have to issue debt again in the future until we either can find some calming in the market, if you will, on these prices. But that doesn't seem to be the case based on last five years alone.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? And anybody has about the budget?
So if you don't have any questions on the presentation, I guess the floor is open here at this point to start going from the, through the book. We don't have to go page by page. We can break it down. It starts with the general fund, then it gets into special revenue funds, debt service, capital projects, utilities, and then the enterprise, or the, excuse me, internal service funds. So to start with the general fund, similar to the last few years, we've just kind of opened it up. Do you have any questions on revenues? Do you have any specific questions on any of the departments? And we can just kind of go from there. Anyone in the room really wants to go line by line by each department? So the key, as Joel mentioned, is it's a balanced budget. So a lot of time and energy is put towards, you know, cross-referencing any adjustments made in one area to make sure that the revenues correspond or the expenditures correspond. Does anybody have any questions on general fund revenues? Fairly consistent, other than the levies. We did see some increases in intergovernmental. That's all driven by the state. Transportation aid is up a little bit. Shared revenues are up a little bit. But otherwise, most things are pretty status quo. Any questions on any of the general fund expenditures, starting with administration, general government, public safety, public works, park and recreation? There's always a park and rec question. Come on, people. Tom?
Mine is later.
One thing I'll mention that I didn't mention before. So with the village's property taxes, with the change in rate, the village's portion of the tax bill for the average homeowner, as was mentioned before, would go up roughly $23.84. Now, with that being said, because of changes to the levy for the county, the school district, the vocational college, and the change in our equalized rate over the course, over that of the entire county, so the apportionment of equalized rate. If the school tax, or still, school, excuse me, the state levy tax credits are the same or similar as they were this past year, that average homeowner will see or should see a decrease in their overall property tax bill. So even though our rate is going up, the overall bill should go down.
It's kind of the opposite of what happened last year. You know, everybody was saying that their rates were going down, and the Ashwabamay portion of the taxes went up because we had a higher equalized value.
Yeah, so the way that the apportionment is done by the county and by Technical College is they look at the total equalized value of the county as a whole, and then we are allocated a portion of their total levy, their dollars that they're taxing, by our percentage of equalized value to the total. So our percentage of the equalized value last year was higher than it is this year. So even though both the county and Technical College increased their levy, we're getting a lower portion of it. So that's what helps drive the reductions in those areas.
Like I said, we had many, many meetings internally with Greg, Sherry, Joel, department heads, and everybody did a great job trying to. Everybody recognizes that we have, the water is going up, the sewer is going up, the storm sewer is going up. So trying to always curtail anything we can, so.
On the increases, Mary, since you brought that up real quick, the increases for the utilities that we just talked about are all started in 20, start in 2026, correct? They did not go in this last bill, did they?
So we have not formalized any of the rate changes yet.
Correct.
That would be proposed. I think you're bringing that to the village board this coming month at the end of November.
Correct, in November. So the information that was provided last month was strictly just to kind of introduce the topic.
Okay.
We haven't formally made a resolution or anything like that to change our rates. Roboter rates will have to be approved by the Public Service Commission. Sewer and sanitary will get approved through resolution. So that's something that we'll be hopefully taking action on at the next board meeting.
Okay. I just had a couple of people reached out saying their bills went up really high. And I'm like, well, I know we talked about, you know, informationally about raising the fees, but I thought it was 2026. So I didn't understand why they went up so much.
Yeah, so some of that could be. So we did adjust our storm sewer rates, but that they were effective last January.
Yeah.
We have noticed that people, for whatever reason, are just noticing that now, even though it's their third quarter billing, which is kind of unique. But we, I've taken two calls about it, which is just kind of unique that it's been so delayed. But it is also a time of year when people are very money-conscious going into the holidays and stuff like that. So I think they're drawing a keener eye to it.
Thank you.
We also have that pass-through rate amendment this past year, which would have went into effect second quarter, I think.
Correct.
So that was New Water, or not New Water, excuse me, Green Bay Water, on the water side, they increased their rate by X percent. And we passed a resolution basically passing that source supply rate on to our ratepayers. And that was implemented second quarter. So they may not have gotten their bill until closer to this period of time that they would have started noticing that increase in that rate.
If there's no questions on the general fund, we can move to the special revenue funds. That's okay. And just a point and note for special revenue funds, again, these funds typically are not levy-supported. They can be, but it's rare. They're generally something that is supported through some other outsource of funds. So, for example, the donation fund, it's pretty straightforward. Someone can walk in and say, hey, I want to give $1,000 to Park and Rec for a bench for a deceased family member. Or I want to, you know, give $500 to public safety just because I like those guys. You know, they can do that, and they can specify. So it's used for a specific purpose. In that, we have the Unitea Service Agreement Fund. So that is, again, it's the payment in lieu of taxes, if you will, from the tribe. And we use those funds, that's the largest one in here, to help offset some of our public safety and IT needs. They're okay from an agreement that, hey, they feel like those are services that somehow impact or are used to support their community. And so you'll see a large list of items in there from public safety and from IT. Typically, these are just ongoing annual needs. You know, replacement of gear, equipment, IT equipment, servers, things alike. We also have the K-9 program in here. That's just kind of an ongoing program with public safety so that we have money built up for the replacement of the dog at some point. Park development, that's driven primarily from park development fees. It has to be used for new park development. It can either be in addition to an existing park facility, or it can be a new park, as we saw across the street, things like that. So that's really what's in here. Are there any questions on any of this, any of the special revenue funds? Okay, if not, then the debt service fund, really quick, as Joel alluded to earlier, this is, we're obligated to meet the needs of our prior debt issuances. So this just goes through, and it did provide the list of all the different debt that we have out there. You can see that some of that debt is related to TIF districts. Those districts do do a transfer of funds to help pay their share of the debt off. So that's why you see we have, you know, roughly $9 million, $8.5 million of debt obligations in total. We're only levying $2 million. Well, that's because the districts will transfer in money to cover their share. No questions there? We can go to the capital projects funds?
I got a question. Sorry. On page 143. On page 143, you've got a graph and it shows the general fund debt and revenue, or referendum debt. And all future years, they're all pretty equal, but this year the general fund, or excuse me, the rever, referendum debt is much higher. What was it in the past and what, why, why is it higher?
That, that, if you would go backwards in time, that red line would be the same. So what, what happened is we had one of the, the first of the three.
It would be the same as, as it is now or as it's going to be?
1.4 million roughly of referendum debt, that's what we've been carrying over the past years. So we're dropping down in 2027 because one of the issuances is done. One of the first debt issuances that we did for the referendum, which would be the community center, the pool, and the auditorium, that first debt is, is, that'll be over, it'll be paid off. So now you're seeing the reduction into 2027, carrying forward for the remaining debt. So that's the first big drop. So we borrowed almost $21 million for the referendum in total. So a big share of that is off the books after next year. So if you go back in time, if you would, this graph starts with 2026. If you went through 2020 through 2025, that red bar would be about the same, 1.4 million.
As it is 2025.
Correct. So that's a good thing. We're losing some of that debt. So the referendum is starting to come offline. I believe it's already been that long, so. Okay. And if no other questions, capital projects funds. So what we do with capital projects funds, these are our large projects within specifically public works, the village facilities, which is a village building fund, park and recreation. And then we also have our tid districts in here. So street constructions is basically mill pay program, plus or minus other projects that come along the way that were mentioned earlier. Village building, the large one in here is, is the facilities with, with the garage. And then park and recreation listed out, as Joel mentioned earlier, those projects that were listed. And the details are behind all these pages, so. TIF right now, there's really not a lot of tid three. We're looking to close that one out soon. It does carry a lot of debt yet, as you can see in those debt charts. But we, the expenditure period is over at this point. The revenues coming in from an increment standpoint are very positive. So there's no issue from a cash flow perspective. It's just a matter of timing, closing that out. We would probably have to escrow some funds to make sure that we cover all of our debt. But we would then be able to take advantage of the valuation coming off and going on to our general, general books, if you will. And tid five is open. It's, it's running negative. It, that will clear in, within a, probably about three years, that'll be in the positive. As, as we've noted, we knew that would be the case. That tid five is an overlay. That's everything across the street and heading north. And then also picked up some areas down, kind of finagle that down, Holmgren Way, included some other parcels and projects down there. But even though it's negative, it's actually doing very well. It will, it will turn and end up being a very positive tid district.
It's nice to hear that in about three years, it'll be running in the positive because I know that Aaron had a few sleepless nights when the, because, because of it being a redevelopment TIF, it, it starts out looking really, really bleak and.
Yeah. The key to that is, again, that's debt, debt issuance. When that debt comes offline, then the first round of debt for basically across the street. And then it'll help turn. Any questions on capital project funds?
Yeah, can I, a couple? Public works related. Brian, I noticed that for infrastructure for streets, it went down $200,000 in 2026. Are you concerned about not keeping up? I'm assuming that's part of the overlays and stuff, or am I off on that?
Yeah. So that, that reduction, actually, some of that actually comes from moving the chipping for the brush chipping. Some of that labor was in that category. So some of the, some of it's from that. But then we also did reduce some of our curb and gutter costs and then some of our sidewalk operational costs for replacements because generally we were doing a lot of project sale on Cormier, stuff like that to replace sidewalk. But through the fact that we are getting caught up right now, next year, I feel as though as we, we aren't going to need, you know, the funds to purchase as much concrete, stuff like that. So we did kind of lean things out where we could.
Okay. So you're comfortable with that amount coming out of there? You've obviously done your due diligence to come up with that amount?
Correct.
Then the other question, this is just a funny one, but I see on page 153, you have duck cleaning for the public safety side. But what about the village hall side? Do there, aren't there ducts to be cleaned here? Or is it this one better than that end? Or is that something to think about?
So there, there is definitely more use in the public safety side. And obviously, that's kind of a habitable area. People do live there.
Yep.
Could you do the entire village hall? Absolutely. It would be a very costly endeavor. We, back last year, we actually did have a fire here at village hall and some of the duct work did get cleaned after that fire because there was some soot buildup in the duct work. That was in the office portion of public safety. This is to clean up the duct work in the actual room, you know, the, the living quarters of public safety because they have seen some dust deposits, stuff like that, that have been coming out of the duct work. In time, absolutely. We definitely could clean all of the duct work throughout village hall, but no concerns have been expressed. So it's something that we're kind of tackling it, you know, a little bit by little, so.
And then the fence relocation project on page 155.
Yes.
So we did the piece, I guess, close to Holmgren.
Yeah.
So this would be the piece over here then?
Yeah. So if, if you do look at our fences, we do have a fence that's actually kind of back behind village hall here. That fence, when it gets to the drainage ditch, does terminate. And there's actually a pretty good gap. It's like 280 feet. And then there's a fence that's kind of internal that used to be a fence that was between public safety and public works. We're looking to kind of relocate that fence. So it's just one large perimeter fence around our campus. And because what we're seeing happening during events, stuff like that, is people are still getting into our secure area. And it's because it, there's, there's a big gap. So someone could actually park on Collier Court somewhere and come through our gap in our fence. And then all of a sudden, they're in the back of public safety going, holy cow, now I can't get out to Holmgren because the gates closed. So they're kind of trapped in our secure area. So what this does, it kind of links that broken segment in our fence.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on capital project funds? Then we move into enterprise funds. And it was, we've kind of talked about that briefly. Overall, this is our water utility, sewer utility and stormwater utility. Really, as a whole, Brian and Steve have done a great job of kind of keeping status quo where they can. The, the key cost drivers for the water and sewer are coming from new water and green, and, and Green Bay water. And, and you've seen those presentations. It's really out of our control. So we do our best to minimize other cost increases. The projects they're working on are, are all either somewhat mandated, if you will, or they, they need to get done for the protection of those facilities and assets. But any other questions you have on these utilities, feel free to, to ask and go ahead.
And we have some pretty big projects coming up with the culvert replacements, the ponds. So those will eat up a lot of the funds for the stormwater.
No questions, then we can move to the last category, which are our internal service funds. These are dental, health, and equipment replacements. So again, internal service funds. There are revenues that are generated by charging back to the, to the, the individual departments. For example, health insurance, the premiums that the village pays for will charge back. Mine goes to the finance department, Joel goes to administration, and so on and so forth. And those go back and are charged in revenue sources to those funds to help support the costs that are generated. So the, we talked about dental and health in, in previous board meetings. On the most recent meeting, we talked about the stop loss and the rate changes. That was all approved. I'm guessing most of the questions would fall under the equipment replacement, all the list of vehicles that are out there. If you have any questions, department heads can certainly answer those.
I have no questions. Does anybody have questions? If not, we can.
At this point, I think there'd be no questions. I believe it's in, in the, sorry, document in front.
Can we just bounce back? I'm sorry, it was too quick for the, um, sorry, page 187. Just interested in the remote control slope mower for the ponds. That sounds like a really good idea. I'm sure we've never had one before.
No, we haven't. It's, I don't want to say it's a new technology. It's been out for about 10 years now.
Yeah, I've seen it.
So you'll notice some municipalities have them. Anybody that has very steep slopes, areas where they're kind of high risk to mow. I mean, honestly, even there's areas that we mow that are, are lawnmowers, they honestly go into a, a slide. Hopefully, that's always a controlled slide because the slopes, slopes are so steep. Thankfully, they haven't made it to the water's edge where they could potentially tip over and end up in the water. But a remote, remote control slope mower, essentially, it's, think of a zero-turn lawnmower, then you put it on track so you make it so it's controlled from a remote. So there is no one physically on it. You do have to be nearby to operate it. Currently, we contract that out. It is done by a, a local contractor. But there is still some areas that we do mow. If you think of the slopes by Holmgren under 172, those slopes are super steep if you actually look at. And we cut those with a riding lawnmower. And if the grass is either too wet or there's just too much moisture content in the grass because it's in a wet part of the season, our mowers, they slide all the way down to the sidewalk. And thankfully, we've had no issues yet. But at some point in time, I don't want it to end that there is an issue. So trying to get ahead of that, making sure we're staying safe along with our ponds, same thing, making sure that we're getting rid of the woody vegetation so they don't get overgrown. No stormwater ponds should have hard woody vegetation around them. That's why you need to cut them on a regular cycle, whether it's two or three times a year to ensure that you don't get trees that are growing on the slopes of the ponds. So there is one manufacturer that's out there that makes them, RC, RC mowers, remote control mowers. They're built right here in Swamaco or not far from here in Swamaco. And there is a lot of adjacent municipalities that do have them, City of Green Bay, DePere, Swamaco, Howard. They do all operate them already. I've reached out to my colleagues, just saying, hey, what are your thoughts? And, you know, they kind of say, how have you not done it yet? And we'll get there, so.
No, I think it's a great idea. I just saw it in there and I'm like, oh, that's just the manpower you're going to save alone.
Yeah, yeah. We do mow a lot of areas, you know, with a string trimmer. Takes forever, but it's the safest way to do it. So hopefully, this will help to create some efficiencies, but the biggest thing is just safety. I mean.
I had actually mentioned getting a remote control mower a couple of years ago, I believe, to Rex and also to Steve. I, I didn't realize they were the cost they are.
Yeah, they're expensive.
But, um, yeah, I, I, I go under 172 on Holmgren all the time. And I just think, oh my, the person who has to mow that, they could end up on that sidewalk in a, in a quick hurry. So I think it's a great idea.
Can I ask another question quick? The allied pond, where actually is that going to be located on allied?
The exact location isn't known. There is a vacant field in that general vicinity. Ideally, that would be the best locations because you don't have to remove any commercial properties that are there. But that is something that we're working through the details of. Much like when we bought the property on Willard, it's very, very contingent on how willing the property owner is. So we do our best to kind of keep an eye on anything that might go for sale up in that area that might make sense for a regional stormwater treatment facility.
The 250 is for purchasing the property, obviously, and then construction as well?
Uh, 250 is strictly for purchasing.
Purchase? Okay.
Yep. Construction, you're probably, I would say, between 600 and 750,000.
Yeah, I saw 250 and it said construction too. And I'm like, wow, that must be a small pond. So it is just purchased property, that one?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't know if we can jump all the way back. I had one question on general fund, and I don't know what page it's on, and it's for Tom. For the new fire marshal position, so we're getting rid of two part-time, which are contracted employees. Is that correct? Right now, or?
No, those are, the two part-time employees that we have were in the budget for last year, for this 25. We do have a contracted service that's also assisting to help with our inspections because we have so many. So with that, the fire marshal will take the place of the two part-time. And kind of also in line with the other departments in this area that have the fire marshal. So they'll also be assisting with some of those duties that a fire marshal also has, so.
So will you still have some contracted, I can't put my hand on the page, contracted service along with the fire marshal? Or were you thinking the fire marshal is going to take care of everything?
So for 26, yes, we'll still need them just because until we get this up and running, we're going to need those to make sure we get our 2% dues taken care of. But then after that, kind of see how it plays out, but hoping that with this new fire marshal position, that all aligns because they're going to be here now full-time, which really is the two part-time positions.
So you're thinking, maybe not in 2026, but maybe 2027, that fire marshal will be doing everything and you will not be contracting for any other services?
Yes, we would not need the contract, contracting services anymore. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and we did reduce the overall contracted service budget. So there was, I don't know, maybe $8,000 reduction from last year.
Page 50, the document, page 50.
That's scary that you know it off the top of your head, Greg. I'm kidding.
You got to it quicker. Page 50 is fire inspection.
That was just my concern. If one person could do all that work, because you've had, you know, two people plus contracted, and now we're saying, okay, one person's going to get hired full-time, are they actually going to be able to handle it all? That was my concern with it. But I know you had some in here for contracted yet.
Okay. Any other questions? Thoughts? Does anybody want to make a motion?
The motion, the motion that's listed in the agenda item would be to recommend the proposed 2026 budget as presented for final adoption, the following, final adoption, the following public hearing on November 25th, 2025.
Okay. So, so moved. What he said.
We have a motion by trustee service. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Flukie to adopt the 2026 proposed village budget for consideration on November 25th at our next village board meeting as presented. Any other thoughts, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Number seven, convening to close session. During the meeting, the village board of the village of Ashwabnan may convene into closed session pursuant to items A and B listed in number seven. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. Second.
Motion by trustee Flukie, seconded by trustee service to go into closed session. Roll call, vote please. Yeah, yeah. Tom is leaving.
Tom will be excused. President Kordowski?
Yes.
Tilly Service?
Yes.
Gary Tollis excused, Chris Erble?
Yes.
Tracy Flukie?
Yes.
And then Jay Krieger is excused, Professor Thompson is excused, and Tim Jaden is excused.
Okay. We're going into closed session.